Right now.
Thank you, counsel. Just to bring us up to date to where we stand at the moment, we've covered off the top the recommendation that we buried the agenda to my half of financial report which we've just completed. We've gone through the adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting. We do have a motion that I would look for now to do which I don't believe that we've followed unless the main line 2016 special counseling, one that we moved and seconded that to adopt that. So I would ask for a move on the second of the day. Any discussion? How was the very forward motions carried? Again, the meeting, the presentation that was made by our auditors and so on. We've now done that. And Mr. Wall, do you have some comments?
Yeah, thank you. The auditors are just going to give a very short presentation in open now, if that's all right with you.
In terms of discussing what the open, council, do you have comments or?
No, sorry, Chris is going to give a short.
Oh, fair enough.
No, you can just go through it.
Right.
Thanks for having me back. So, yeah, just to kind of recap, push very quickly this. Okay, sorry about that. Make sure you can hear, especially for those on the phone. So, yeah, so my name is Chris, Chris Culler from KPG. I'm the manager and audit practice in French George. So my team and I have been working on the audit of the district over the past couple of months and here to present the results today. So we walked through basically the provided council with drafts financial statements that they have in front of them, ending their approval tonight. So basically presenting the numbers to you today in order to gain your approval to go final with those 2015 financial statements. So that's sort of how our process works. Kind of walk through the audit reports. This year it's a clean audit report for the district again this year under public sector accounting standards. So that's where you want to be. You want to have clean auditor support from us. On the financial statement side, walk through financial assets, financial liabilities, and certainly tangible capital assets of the district and the changes and everything that's occurred during the year. And have a discussion around surplus and the reserves. So, yeah, basically, if you want to go into the results much, much in depth or anything, there's any questions, please feel free, if there's any questions, in open discussion.
All right. So the motion being ordered out to accept the audit report as presented. Discussion? Aye. Aye. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you very much.
Did you put a motion on the floor, Mr. Wall, to on 3.2, special meeting of council? To the council of Dr. Minister P. Knight, 2016, that's been done? Okay, fair enough. Correspondent?
Yep. Counselor Scott is correct. We can move to item six.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the B.C. Homeowners' debt. Recommendation for course?
Recommendation to move for information.
Second for the motion. Counselor Scott, discussion. Aye. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the 6.2, the B.C. Emergency Health Services recommendation. That council received for information or discussion. Order in favor of your player. For the special council. No, we take the recommendation first that we receive it for discussion. Counselor Scott, second by Councilor Kirby. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's on page three. Counselor Scott, go ahead.
That was the B.C. Emergency Health Services. I have had somebody come forward and they're wanting clarification between on the CECL program, which is a choice and support for independent living. I'm just wondering if this new proposal is replacing that. I'm wondering if that's something we can.
I'm not aware. Mr. Wall, do you have any information relative to that?
No, I'm not sure. They have listed contact information if people have questions on the programs that they can get in touch with. But, no, I mean, I'm not sure. I don't think anybody on staff would know either. None of us are health professionals.
On that, we just do the research ourselves?
Yeah, you can make a motion if you have staff. Contact information provided. It would be up to council. Best.
Possibly bring forward, if you can see that, July?
Bring it through to 80. To discuss it further, or do you want more information provided? To do that, we do that by way of a motion that has been suggested.
We do have to go to the communities committee because I think some of this is more than valid, which is coming up on the 14th of June. So maybe I'll have more information at that time. I was just wondering more on some of the questions that have been asked at that meeting.
Okay, so what would you like to do? We'd like to, what we can do is leave it as is. See for information, take that.
Okay.
And then do gather whatever information you think is pertinent.
I have any more questions.
Fair enough. I think we can take that by way of direction. Do we need a motion for that?
And so you're just asking us to move this to the B.C. with no, we're not doing the report? I'm unclear.
If I understood, Counselor Scott, she could take that back to your committee, discuss it further, and get more of a position. I would assume on it. And then bring it back and deal with it at that point. And whatever goes from there, if we need further information or report by staff, we can present it at that time. Fair enough? Counselor Kirby? What is to do with the health services, right? On 8.3, the Peace River Local Government Association.
Discussion?
For discussions, so moved and seconded by Counselor Scott. On the favor. And that it will be on page 32. Counselor Kirby, go ahead.
Yes, so the Peace River Local Government Association is looking to move their meeting to an earlier date so that we can get some conversation going about resolutions going forth to NCLGA. So I think, as counsel here, I think that's, that would be a good move on our part, that maybe we could be in favor of moving that meeting to an earlier time of the year.
I certainly have no questions at that. Counselor Scott? Fair enough. Is there a motion required on that, or is that?
I think it was just stating that, you know, we give, you know, let our communities' preference known and then just communicate with maybe Counselor Brownlee from Chatwin. So whether that would be something Acting Mayor would do, or?
If you want staff to get in touch with the association, just pass that motion. We'll do that. If somebody on the table wants to just say that you've pulled the council and you make the call, you wouldn't need it. It'd be up to you. If you want staff to take it on, just pass the motion. We'll get it done.
So move by yourself?
Yep. I can motion that staff get in touch with Alec Brownlee and let him know that District of Tumbler Ridge would be in favor of moving that meeting to an earlier date.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Now down to 6.4, which is on 2.33, Council of California State, on one here. The FCM Green Community about the Alberta Fire Appeal and that council received information or discussion.
For discussion, please.
Okay, for discussion. Do I have a second or for discussion? Counselor Scott, all those in favor? All those, motion is carried. Counselor Mackay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, this was one of the items that was brought up on the agenda for the conference. And there's 1,600 delegates in attendance. And there was overwhelming support for this. You see the letter? Well, no, that's exactly what we talked about. And getting as much, as much support for the residents of Tumbler Ridge, just taking into consideration the losses. And I don't know what a dollar figure would be, but I think we, I think there should be some support in some way, whatever, whatever we feel we can do. And I'll leave that, that part up to discussion, I guess.
The only other comment that I would make on this, that maybe it's an appropriate comment to take to the DNP, schedule that. We know that the provincial government, what federal governments and every other organization that we can think of, has also provided support to, to community and so forth. And in terms of a dollar amount, is that something that council is prepared to deal with at this point, figure in mind, or should we have a broader discussion relative to what would be reasonable for us to put forward? That's your pleasure, counsel.
I'm just wondering, is, do we act, like separately, or do we, do we donate as the, like with the regional district? I agree that maybe it's something we look at.
All right. Is that Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Mackay, does that seem like a reasonable approach to you, sir?
Yeah, that, I think that's the, the best approach there, Keesley.
All right, fair enough. We're going to move this talk to our next schedule, which time we'll discuss in greater detail. Counselor Scott, go ahead.
How is the agenda for the, like the 13th, is it quite full, or is there room for a few more?
The agenda for the PBC isn't terribly large. I think it's something that we could add on there.
Next item on the agenda of council is the golf tournaments official handicap, which is on page 35, if I'm not mistaken. And would we just remove it for discussion?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Keesley. There is a report later on in the agenda to deal with this issue. Might be worth just waiting to pick up the discussion.
All right, I believe. Thank you, Mr. Wall. As we mentioned previously, that's 8.9, which time you bring that up. Thank you. Okay. 6.6, council, page 36, is the Conflict of Interest Exceptions Regulation. Recommendation received for information or discussion, whatever is your pleasure.
Information.
For information, thank you. Second by Counselor Kirby. Any discussion? Mr. Kirby?
Aye.
Next item, council, is the 2016 candidate. Page 39. And I would ask that we. Discussion, all those in favor of motion?
Aye.
Thank you. I guess the question, whether or not that we want to participate, counsel, in it, in the whose group we created, so that we see the question here and so forth. And if we were to participate in it, and we're not, we're probably, council member or leaders to go study it, not particularly initially.
There's Counselor Mackay, sorry. It's, we've gotten a lot of static. Do you mind putting your, your phone on mute, maybe?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Counselor Mackay.
Okay.
So in terms of whether or not we are prepared to do this, I know in previous years, council, we've talked about this online, and we have participated and so forth. Whether or not we're prepared to do this year, that may be a little more difficult for us in terms of planning perhaps for next year or whatever. It would be another thought that we could have. So it's for discussion. What are your feelings on that? Counselor Kirby, any comments?
I just know for years that the district has participated in whose group we, so I know that we've left our float to the last minute for a lot of years. I think if we're going to do it, we should go, you know, get working on that sooner than later. I read that we were celebrating the Queen's Birthday is the theme. I know myself, I'm unavailable that weekend. So that's something to take into consideration. I don't know if, if you was Acting Mayor, you'd like to participate, then I would be in favor of that.
What my feelings on this year is that I'm the same. I don't think that we have sufficient time. And again, to build a vote, to be able to do that, we talked about it relative to previous years of trying to get one together. So I, from where I'm coming from, I don't think we're prepared or ready to do that and put the kind of presentation forward. So as far as I'm concerned, I would go and consider the invitation in 2017. That's it. Thank you.
And if we were to do that, take time to organize a float and participants, we should get a list of all the communities, Chatwin, Dawson Creek, or St. John, of when their, their parades are, and perhaps plan to attend most of them.
We wanted the district to make the sweep for St. John, choices that could happen in a year. All right, fair. Yes.
Does anybody know how many years we have participated in that parade itself?
Our participation has been often off from, you know, previous years. So maybe it hasn't been a constant one.
It might provide us with the opportunity as well. Again, not to believe this, but I know we've had previous councils conversations about it. Nice to be able to develop a float. One that doesn't have to be changed year after year, but something that could be assembled and, and represent Tumbler Ridge the way that we're all collected, proud of and so forth. And, and it's done. It's a matter of showing up. Counselor Scott?
Is this something that could go on another organization role, like the Chamber of Commerce or the Community Center for, like, planning events and stuff like that?
Certainly no reason why you can't put the thought out and have a meeting on it and discuss it to a point, see what other ideas might come up. So we'll leave it for the time being. Okay, council, the next item on the agenda is down to bylaws, if I'm not mistaken. Page 41. Recommendation, this is the bylaw, number 169, 2016, Revitalization Tax Exemption Amendments, Bylaw, recommendation at District of Tumbler Ridge. Revitalization Tax Exemption, Bylaw number 629, 2016, be read a third time. Counselor Kirby? Counselor Scott, discussion? All those in favor? All those.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you, counsel. Next item is bylaw number 633, 2016, on page 43. And report annual responsibility requesting the first two readings of the proposed bylaw. It's on page four. That council gets first reading of the District of Tumbler Ridge Annual Responsibility Bylaw, number 633, 2016. Counselor Kirby, thank you. Counselor Scott, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, Counselor Scott, go ahead.
Okay, bringing this up, I've had a few people know that the chicken in my law is into this here, the Bay County Law. They're questioning why we do not have Australia feral cats included in this. And I do recognize that this is on part five of the animal control on page 69, that no person should include five cats. But is, is there a reason why we don't include cats in here?
Mr. Wall?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Scott. So it was something we took a look at when we were drafting this. But when we saw the amount of infrastructure and work that went, goes into leasing cats, it's something we decided to keep out. I'm just going to go over a number of the issues that we ran into. And if it's something that council wants us to put into it, we can. But there will be a considerable cost to it. Because when we want, if we want to start regulating cats, because usually the complaint you get about cats are the ones that are, people are claiming that they're out and about wherever it is they please. So in order to do something about that, what we would need to create is a licensing and taken system for all the cats in town. We would need to buy cages, gloves, and training for our staff to deal with them. We'd also need to have the ability to impound them if we caught them. So that would mean significant capital upgrades to our current pound, more staff time in order to deal with them. We need to buy the foods and bowls, significantly higher operating costs for bylaw to do this, as well as we would need to develop a system for basically what to do when we capture a cat that isn't claimed. And the SPCA won't take Tumbler Ridge, they're already at capacity for other ones. So we would either need to develop an adoption program for cats that we capture, which are the spaying and neutering of them on our expense, and housing of them until we're able to adopt them, or if we're able to adopt them out. And barring that, if that's not something we want to do on long-term keeping, for the cats, we would need to implement a euthanasian program in Tumbler Ridge. So it's something we took a look at. It's something that we can do, but it'll have a pretty significant price tag if we go down that road.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Second regulation, council gives second reading to the District of Tumbler Ridge Annual Responsibility Bylaw, number 633, 2016. Counselor Mackay, are you prepared to recommend that, sir?
I'm having a little bit of a problem here with my, with my agenda. So I don't have it in front of me here right now.
Oh, okay. Well, it's the same, it's the same one that we've just passed, only it's a second reading.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, do I have a second, Counselor Kirby, for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item, council, is 7.3, the bylaw number 640, 2016, an MT1 amendment that's on page 75 of the agenda. And the recommendation that you see is that the District of Tumbler Ridge municipal ticketed donation, MTI Amendment, bylaw number 40, 2016, be read a third time. Counselor Kirby, thank you. Do I have a second here? Counselor Scott, going for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. The second one under the same, for second reading, is that report dated June 16, 2016, from corporate officer, titled Municipal Ticket Information, MTI Amendment, bylaw number six. The district, I'm sorry, council, that the District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticket NTI Amendment, bylaw number 640, 2016, be read a second time. Counselor Kirby, Counselor Scott, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. We're now down to the bylaw for 7.4, which is on page three of your.
Excuse me, Acting Mayor. Can you hold on for just a second? I think we might have missed a report. Traffic. Okay. My apologies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, council, again, on page eight, 7.4, recommendations before us, at the District of Tumbler Ridge Traffic and Highways Regulation Amendment, bylaw number 66, 2006, be read a first time? Counselor Scott? Counselor Kirby, seconded? Discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of issues regarding this bylaw. One being 6.15, Commercial Vehicle Maintenance. This is where conduct, conducted vehicle maintenance or repairs to a, to a commercial vehicle having a gross vehicle weight in excess of 8,600 kg's on a highway or district parking lot in any C2 zone. Alongside this amendment to the traffic bylaw, the Municipal Ticketing Bylaw, number 560, 2011 Schedule 10, would need to be amended to include a fine for this regulation. If what council has any thoughts to adding that?
Where are you at, Chalene?
I'm at, I just am at my own, this came, there was some discussion about this. I think everybody was emailed this paper. But anyway, that's one issue. And then there's also the issue of trucking, 11.40, truck parking, and that's commercial vehicles having a gross vehicle weight in excess of 8,600 kg's on any private property of district or district property in a residential area, except when actively engaged in loading and unloading. So alongside this amendment to the traffic bylaw, Municipal Ticketing Bylaw number 560, 2011 Schedule 10, would need to be amended to include a fine for this regulation. So those are just two issues that, you know, might be worth looking at adding into this bylaw.
Are they covered here, though?
I, no.
No?
So right now, thank you, Mayor Keesley. So right now, those two issues are not covered within it. So on parking of the big retail car, then, people are able to park them on their private property. So the second amendment that you have on the paper, Counselor Kirby, would be to bar that. Now, I think the easiest way to go about this would be to take the first issue, which was.
Commercial vehicle maintenance?
Commercial vehicle maintenance. So probably the easiest thing to do would be to introduce an amendment to the traffic bylaw, which you have in front of you. And then council can discuss that one issue. You can make a decision. We'll put it in. And then move on to the next issue, and council can make a decision on that. I would suggest that that's probably the easiest way to deal with it.
So.
So we would, we would need a motion on the floor to add section, I'm trying to pull it up. Counselor Kirby, you have it?
A section six.
Yep.
6.15?
That's right. So if council would introduce that motion on the floor, you have a discussion on that, and we can find out if we should put that in the bylaw.
Counselor Kirby, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to add 6.15, Commercial Vehicle Maintenance into the bylaw, where conduct vehicle maintenance or repairs to a commercial vehicle having a gross vehicle weight in excess of 8,600 kg kilograms on a highway or district parking lot in any C2 zone.
Wait, do I have a second for the motion? Counselor Scott, going for discussion? And that, call a question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And your second suggestion, Mr. Wall?
Second suggestion would be to introduce the motion with 11.40.
So now we're looking to have second reading of the, nope, of the.
We're still on the first reading.
Still on the first, only the amendment.
Counselor Kirby is ready to make another amending.
To make a motion to add to recommendation for 11.40. To make a motion to add to recommendation four, eleven-point-four-zero, truck parking, a commercial vehicle having a gross vehicle weight in excess of eighty-six-hundred KGs on any private property, property or district property in a residential area, except when actively engaged in loading and unloading.
I have a second for the motion. Counsel Scott, open for discussion. All those in favor? Move, motion is carried.
Done.
Where do we stand on this, Wall?
If council's happy with the way the bylaw reads now, we could move on to second reading. Or we could sort of pass first, first reading.
All right, so... So we're looking at the first reading, the amended motion?
That's correct, amended by law.
At the District of Tumbler Ridge Traffic and Highways Regulation Amendment Bylaw Number six-three-six, two thousand and sixteen, be read a first time, as amended. Moved by Counsel Scott, seconded by Counsel Kirby, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And that, that same motion, and so forth, be read a second time. Moved by Counsel Kirby, seconded by Counsel Scott, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And the third reading, the same bylaw, that it be read a third time, as amended, moved by Counsel Scott, seconded by Counsel Kirby, discussion, all those in favor? Move.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, council will now move down to Bylaw Number six-three-seven, two thousand and sixteen, MTI amendment, and that's on page one hundred and seventeen of the agenda. Recommendation on the floor is, or will be, is that the District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticket Information, MTI Amendment Bylaw Number six-three-seven, two thousand and sixteen, be read a first time. A mover and a second. Counsel Scott? Move, Counsel Kirby, discussion. Counsel Scott?
Do any of the changes?
Yeah, this will affect the fees, and it's something that we can go in and make those changes. If you want to do the three readings today, council can make those changes within, or we can do the first two readings, staff will go back. It's really doesn't matter which way we go about it.
First two readings, and staff take it back, and they come back to us? So the motion that's presently on the floor is valid?
Yep.
Fair enough. I think we moved a second of that, had the discussion, all those in favor? Move, motion is carried. The same motion on the floor to be read a second time, as amended?
Nope.
Hasn't been amended, just as it is.
Correct.
Need to have a mover and a second of that. Counsel Scott, thank you, Counsel Kirby, thank you, discussion. All those in favor? Move, motion is carried. So just for clarification, Mr. Wall, you'll take this particular motion out back, and then bring it back to us at the next regular council meeting?
That's correct.
Fair enough, thank you, sir. Okay, now we're down to Bylaw Number six-three-seven-point-six on the agenda, council, that's on page one hundred and nineteen. And we have a recommendation on the floor, that the District of Tumbler Ridge Off-Road Vehicle Amendment Bylaw Number six-three-eight, two thousand and sixteen, be read a first time. Counsel Kirby, Counsel Scott, discussion? All those in favor? Move, motion is carried. The District of Tumbler Ridge Off-Road Vehicle Amendment Bylaw Number six-three-eight, two thousand and sixteen, be read a second time. Counsel Scott, thank you, Counsel Kirby, thank you.
Thank you, I'd just like to be honest with you, the motion that we made, we just emailed the council with, if the controlled stops are not, if council isn't happy with the controlled stops in the ORV bylaw being four-way stops, and would rather have controlled lights, we'd be looking for direction sometime in this meeting would be preferable. So the options that we have are four-way stops, and that's what's been recommended by staff and also the RCMP in conjunction in the ORV committees. The other option is to upgrade these stops to controlled lights, controlled traffic stops, where you push the button and allows people to go, but that will be at an increased cost of thirty thousand dollars per stop.
How much?
Forty thousand dollars more per stop, and just so council know, we only budgeted thirty thousand dollars for the implementation of the ORV bylaw, so it's something that we would need to significantly increase the budget if that's what you want to do. We are able to do it, but right now, staff will be proceeding with the four-way stop if you would like to have the controlled crossings. We just need that motion, as well as the money to undertake.
Counsel Kirby, please.
Um, can I, I did have the opportunity to, to look at some of the new, new devices for, exactly, it's exactly for this, and they're, they're run not only by motion, by heat, and although there's, they're definitely expensive, I don't think there's a cheap way to do this, but there's some pretty interesting alternatives there, but I, I'm just hoping I could maybe give it to the, the department heads first.
Is, is this something that is worthy of, 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 in terms of procedures, P and P meeting, in terms of being able to discuss the ramifications in greater detail?
I indicated to council that we really were holding our direction on this from this meeting. We can move it to the P and P, but just keep in mind, the more we delay this, we are not, we are not meeting the regulations we've set out in our bylaw, and we need to implement these things sooner rather than later, so we can continue to postpone it. We do have grace periods in order to bring these things into being, you know, when we pass a bylaw, we have time in order to implement it, but we, staff is waiting for direction on where we go from this. So if this is something council wants to take to impede, we can do something.
Counsel Kirby, Counsel Scott?
Can I ask a question, too, please?
I would, I would like to see us move forward with the four-way stops. I think after we've, we've got them in, if we need to, we can change that down the road if need be, just to follow through on what we've started here, and, and just, and take it from there.
Okay, Counsel Scott, your...
I agree with the four-way stop, if that's recommendation coming from our admin's company, was the RCMP, and I think it's very important that we, that people are waiting for this for quite some time, and it's...
Hey, Counsel Mackay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, and if that's what we decide to do, then that, that's great, just that there is alternatives, but as Mr. Wall pointed out, there's, there's no doubt that the amount of money we've all laid, allotted to it is going to be, is going to fall far short, so.
Right.
But just so you know, there are other alternatives that, that look pretty good, too.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor Casey, just to touch on what Counsel Scott has said, the, yeah, the RCMP's reasoning for this is that the speeding is a problem on that street anyway, and this would be a good way to, to break it up, so they're in favor of four-way stop because of that reason.
Any further comments? All those in favor? All those vote?
Aye.
Motion is carried. The second time, so we can go on to the third, that the District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticket Amendment Bylaw, Number six-three-eight, two thousand and sixteen, be read a third time. Counsel Scott? Move, Counsel Kirby, seconded? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, I think council will now down to Bylaw Number six-three-nine, two thousand and sixteen, MTI, that's page one hundred and twenty-two, that the District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticket MTI Amendment Bylaw, Number six-three-nine, two thousand and sixteen, be read a first time. Counsel Kirby, Counsel Scott, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. By the way, there's going to be a test after this, right? I'm going to be asking the questions, I suppose, trying to think answers. That's another story, okay. Now, the second reading, that the District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticket Information, MTI Amendment Bylaw, Number six-three-nine, two thousand and sixteen, be read a second time. Counsel Scott, thank you, and Counsel Kirby, discussion? All, all those in favor? Move, motion is carried. Finally, that the District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticket Information, MTI Amendment Bylaw, Number six-three-nine, two thousand and sixteen, be read a third time. Counsel Kirby, thank you, Counsel Scott, discussion? All those in favor? Move, motion is carried. Thank you, council. We're now down to eight-point-one, leave of absence by Mayor McPherson, recommendation that council approves a six-month leave of absence for Mayor McPherson, dated June six-three thousand and sixteen. Counsel Kirby, thank you, Counsel Scott, discussion? All those in favor? Eight-point-two is the carbon action revenue success on page one hundred and twenty-five, council, the council receives a two thousand and fifteen CARIP report for information and discussion, I would recommend for information. So move, Counsel Kirby and Counsel Scott, discussion, all those in favor? Move. Page one hundred and forty-two, candidate celebrations. Recommendations before, council, to the council, recommendation that council approves closure of front street on July first, two thousand and sixteen, candidate celebrations, as per the attached map, and that council approves street vendors on district property during candidate day event. Counsel Kirby, so move, thank you, and Counsel Scott, in favor? Discussion? All those in favor? Move, motion is carried. Next item, council, is the expansion of hours of recycle and transportation on page one forty-four. This was the one, I believe, that we touched on earlier, but I would suggest that we move that for discussion. Am I, Counsel Scott, for this? Okay, and Counsel Kirby? So for discussion, and Mr. Wall, do you have some additional comments?
Thank you, Mayor Casey, none other than this was discussed by council the last P and P, there's two options in front of you, cap, staff has made the recommendation Tuesday through Saturday, this is just to provide a work-life balance for the employees that have to be down there. It is council's choice on what service level you want us to provide for the community, so we are looking for a decision from council today, but, and you have both options.
Okay, and the recommendation, recommended option is District of Tumbler Ridge operates transfer station from ten AM to six PM Tuesday through Saturday, if I'm not mistaken, that's been moved and seconded? Moved, council, and seconded. Counsel Kirby, discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor Casey, I would, myself, would prefer to see the alternate recommendation as the transfer station open from ten AM to six PM Wednesday through Sunday.
Okay?
I'm in favor of the Tuesday through Saturday, just for the, those seven reasons of amendment, I think it works for a more balanced for the people in that station.
Okay, so we have the recommendation on the floor, recommend by law, that the District of Tumbler Ridge operates transfer station from ten AM to six AM Tuesday through Saturday, that's the motion that's on the floor, am I correct? So in terms of either, we either approve this, or we can decline it, or we, we can amend it, but if you're talking about a different option entirely, the best route would go to defeat this, and put the other one on the floor? Go ahead, Mr. Wall.
Yeah, you have both options in front of you, defeating it and introducing a new motion, and introducing amending motion to, to make it look the way you want, however council wants to proceed. I would encourage just council to have the debate and come to your decision.
Okay, so council, what's your pleasure? Counsel Kirby, go ahead.
How many employees do we have at the transfer station on Saturday or Sunday?
This would be one full-time employee.
One full-time employee?
Two.
Two. Two full. Now, I know in some search situations, you can have alternate days where, where you can switch on and off every other Sunday, an employee could... I think, you know, myself, one employee, we're in a, we're from a town that has had four on, four offs, scheduling is different. I, I myself do not see a big deal with having it open Wednesday to Sunday, I think it's a bigger benefit to the community to have the transfer station open on a Sunday, it doesn't conflict with your garbage pickup, garbage pickup still will be Tuesday, Thursday, that's my, that's kind of my opinion, that's my, that's just my part of the debate, you know, if anybody wants to add to that, but I don't see a problem with those dates.
So your suggestion is Wednesday?
Sunday.
Wednesday, Sunday. Counsel Scott, go ahead.
And people right now are used to having it open on a Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, so to me, we would be adding two extra days during the week, and it's still remaining with the one on the weekend, so a lot of people do things throughout the week, I think Sundays just would be a little slow date for anybody working, usually that's when people are, so I think we utilize it, have four days during the week, and one day on the weekend.
Tuesday through Saturday, then, sure.
Exactly.
I'd like to, I'm just wondering, how many, how many people would, how many residents would, would this benefit that actually don't have the opportunity during the week by opening the Sunday? That's one thing, but it's also, it means we have another, another employee from the town that's working on a Sunday, and I would, you know, if it's not needed, then I don't think that's the route to go down.
Can somebody?
And if we, and if somebody, if somebody can make, if there was a, a good case to be made for having someone there, then, then I'm all for it, but I just don't see, I think there's sufficient time already, I, I don't see us picking up anybody else that couldn't take advantage of those other days.
So you're suggesting then that, to, correct me if I'm wrong, is it then the motion that's on the floor, are you speaking in favor of that motion?
Definitely, yeah.
Okay, Counsel Kirby, anything further?
Well, you know, I, I'm, I'm on the other side of the fence on this, because, you know, you, I see things dumped on a Sunday in, in places that you shouldn't be dumping stuff. A, a lot of people do their, their yard cleanups on Saturday and Sunday, and then they have a full truck, and if they can't take it in, then guess what happens? It gets taken to the bush. I, there's, I looked at, I've, I've looked at other communities, a lot of communities in the area, Dawson Creek and Hudson Hole do the same hours, Wednesday through Sunday. There's one thing is we don't have a real late night where you can go till eight or nine o'clock, I mean, that could be another option, but to me, one employee on a Sunday, I, I think there's more of a benefit on Sunday being open than, than a Tuesday.
Any further comments, council? Anything new in terms of comments? So the existing motion on the floor is that the District of Tumbler Ridge operates the transfer station from ten AM to six PM Tuesday through Saturday. Any further comments? Call a question on a motion, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Gates, motion is carried. Okay, we're down to... Divisional dividend grant, recommendation to council, the council supports a grant application to the DC Rural Dividend Grant for an investment readiness plan, and that, but, that council acknowledges this project was not accounted for in the two thousand and sixteen budget, and that's on page... Six, so I would ask for a mover and a second of the motion, thank you, Counsel Kirby, Counsel Scott, and Mr. Wall, you had some comments, I believe, on this, sir.
Yeah, I'll just give a couple of comments, thank you, Mayor Casey, and it's really around the budgeting for these types of grants, so these grants come in, they're not things that are budgeted for, so when we roll to get them, let's say for, for Mr. Powell, this is going to be within his budget, if we go through for it, and council chooses what we want him for, but his budget expenditures are going to grow by a hundred thousand dollars. Now, we're going to get that money back, but his budget numbers are still going to go by a hundred thousand dollars, so those are things you need to take into mind when the revenue comes, the expenses come at the end, Mr. Powell hasn't overspent his budget by a hundred thousand dollars, this is just grant money that he's went out and spent. Now, the question that really comes in that I'm asking council to take a look at when considering this, is that there's a twenty percent contribution that the district has to make to this grant, so we would get eighty thousand dollars, we need to contribute twenty. When these type of grant opportunities come up, do we want Mr. Powell, or whatever department head, to take that twenty thousand dollars out of their other expenditures that we had planned for, for the year, so that we end up relatively the same? Or do we want to take that twenty thousand dollars, put it in on top, and move for the other projects we had planned? So what we can do is remove twenty thousand dollars from marketing, or remove twenty thousand dollars from land readiness or other projects that we're working on, or we can just add, so that's just something for council to consider when you're going through, we are not in a rush on this grant, if council is not happy with either of the proposals in front of them, we can move this to a P and P, and council can discuss what we want to be able to afford, but the reason that you're going to see me throughout the year saying that council acknowledged this project was not accounted for in the two thousand and sixteen budget, is simply at the end of the year, if twenty thousand dollars was added on here, and fifty was added on here, and seventy-five was added on here, that there's, you know, very clear at the end of the year, council... there's, you know, very clear at the end of the year, council approved these expenditures. It wasn't my staff going over this.
All right, thank you very much. So, we've got the choice, council, so I understand it. Mr. Wall, break it down. When we can move and accept the recommendation that we have before us, or to refer this to a P and P, maybe to discuss it further. What is your pleasure?
I'm.
Counselor Scott, go ahead.
I'm myself in favor of the recommendation. At the time crunch, we should bring it to the next P and P due to the fact that there are so many.
Counselor Kirby, any thoughts? What's your pleasure?
I'm fine with the recommendation as it stands.
Counselor Mackay, any comments on that, sir?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and then I'm going to put it up for, for a vote. And again, the recommendation is the council supports a grant application to the DC Rural Dividend Grant for an investment readiness plan, and the council acknowledges this project was not accounted for in the 2016 budget. Call a question on the motion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. On page 149, which is the Community Infrastructure Program, with a recommendation before, the council proves a submission of a Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program Grant Application to fund mountain bike team development for the history of Tumble Ridge. What is your pleasure? Counselor Kirby, please.
I just support the recommendation.
Support the recommendation? Do I have a second for them? Counselor Scott? Discussion? All is in favor? Move, motion is carried. The next item on council is a point seven, which is the Tumble Ridge Tourism Award. As I would receive this for discussion. All is in favor of the motion? Here. I just, council, want to. Mention that, as, as I understand it, I mean, it's, it's, it's great news, and as I understand it, you just have done some, some, some excellent work has, has been done and so forth, and that is the second award, I believe, that we have received as well. So, just wanted to, how you, council fellow about that? Good news, and I think about worth mentioning, you want to say congratulations. Counselor Kirby, do you?
Oh, you bet. That's a, it's great to get this award. We took the slow path to getting it, but I think it was worth the wait. Good job.
Counselor Scott, any comments?
No.
Counselor Mackay, do you have any comments, sir?
No, I'm good.
All right. Well, well done, first class. All right. Next one is the page 152, which is Tumble Ridge Ripper's Guild Award. And I would ask. Date of June 2nd. Requesting a fee waiver for the locker space occupied by the TR Ripper's Guild, and I would, Guild, and I would ask for a motion to see for discussion. Counselor Scott, I have a second there. Counselor Kirby, open the discussion. The recommendation that council can use the request to waive fees for the storage space occupied by the Tumble Ridge Ripper's Quilt Guild in room three at the Community Center. So, I, when I had a look at that myself, council, with regards to recommendation, I, I think the kind of money that we're talking about, $100? And I, from a personal perspective, don't, don't take to that one, but that's money that we, that we, that we, other than that, I thought it was a, was a request. What is your pleasure, Counselor Scott?
I know that last year, with all of the requests, the different organizations. This is something that, I'm, I'm in favor of the recommendation that. We were looking at starting the next season. Equal values on, on everything. Sure there's some consistency.
Counselor Kirby, do you have?
I agree with Counselor Scott. We're trying to establish some boundaries and some guidelines, and this council's been great for giving away everything for nothing, and at some point, we're going to have to start making some, getting, collecting a few dollars. I know that the, the Ridge Ripper's do a lot of good things, and, you know, when you read what they donate to, it's, you, you kind of feel bad. So, you know, next time I'm out there, I'll be buying a ticket on a boat.
Right, then, let me just go over the, Counselor Mackay, do you have any comments, sir?
Uh, not really, just, it's just stories. That's the only thing that's required here, or is there meeting space? I don't see anything really about meeting spaces.
They're talking about the storage space, that's the only reference that is made in the recommendation.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, no, I don't have a comment on that.
Okay, then, let me just put the recommendation out again, council. The council denies the request to waive fees for the storage space occupied by the Tumble Ridge Ripper's Quilt Guild in room three at the Community Center. All is in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Oh, I'm voting in favor. But that's carried, council, thank you. Now, we're down to the BC Guild Association, which is on page 57. Council receives this report for information and discussion. Council, what's your pleasure? It's a member of the Gothic Country Club, membership, and so for information or discussion.
For information.
Information, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Scott. All is in favor?
Aye.
And on page 153, council. Have the limitations regarding section 175 of the Community Charter. Before, the council received the, received the limitations regarding section 175 of the Community Charter for information. Moving for discussion of 5th May. Counselor Scott, thank you, Counselor Kirby. All is in favor? Period.
Here. On page 160 is simply providing for previous report that was brought to council under DC. We can move to page 161.
To page 161?
Yes.
Okay, oh, that's right. So, it's rezoning of the hotels to permit long-term stays. Is that what we're looking for? Right? Team, council, we on the same page with this?
Do we need to take care of page 160 first, though?
Yeah.
That council authorized, Mayor McPherson, for us to be able to sign the lease as presented on behalf of the district. I know it skips the one six one.
We're, we're good to go. Council received the limitations regarding section 175 for information.
Uh huh, yes.
The next page, on page 160, is just a previous report that council's already dealt with.
Okay.
So, it's just there for information. It's not something council needs to look at today. So, we.
I have a question. I think Counselor Casey said it was for discussion.
Oh, that's, that's fine, I can, can leave that off. I thought it was tied. Forgot what we had talked about, relevant to have already been dealt with, to us. Fine to leave it for information, if that's your pleasure, council.
Yes.
Okay, so we are on the rezoning. On page 161, I can, recommendation. Like to move for discussion, council, if I may. Counselor Kirby, thank you. Counselor Scott? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. We've got some recommendations, counsel, you to go through. Aye. Aye. Bear with me for just a second here. I had a couple of points that I just wanted to eat in. This, this is one that I, again, I'm going to throw out as to whether or not it is worthy of putting it for a more in-depth discussion on future P and P, or the next one or whatever. Question that I got is on page 182, I'm sorry, 162. Wilderness Lodge Covenant. The Wilderness Lodge was sold by the district to the current owner. It was done so at a fair price, with covenant put on the building to prevent long-term stays. The purpose was to encourage use of the lodge for tourism visitors. At the time, Tumble Ridge was going through large economic growth in the coal industry, and wanted to ensure that its fledgling tourism industry would not be crowded out by worker accommodation needs. Given the change in economic circumstance, circumstances, staff suggests that this type of restriction be lifted. And the concern that I have with making a change on that, is my understanding, and Mr. Wall, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that if we change the rezoning, or if we change the zoning on, on, on this particular area, this, this item specifically, that there's no going back, so that if indeed we're in favor of this, we can no longer change it back to a hotel status, which would mean that in terms of hotel-type accommodation, to accommodate a change in the economic situation and so forth, attracting people in, it, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to see that it will remain with this change. You can't change it in other places for accommodation. Am I, am I correct on that, Mr. Wall?
Thank you, Mayor Casey. You're correct. This, these changes are permanent changes. These aren't things that you, council can, can decide on, and then later on, didn't work out, or situations change, and you'd like to get those uses back once it's out, and it's permanent. So, these are very serious things to consider, and if council's not comfortable making a decision today, there's no, at all, on staff's end of this. This has been brought up by potential investors who would like to buy the building, and they'd like to expand their usage. It's their timeline, not staff's, so we are perfectly comfortable with this.
That, that's the major concern, counsel, that I've got, is, you know, it's going to turn around, everybody's working towards doing, and I believe it's going to happen, I think we all do. And then all of a sudden, we're stuck with some space, and we can't make any changes, and it just seems to me to be the wrong thing to do. So, we can have further discussion on it, that's finally broken, but we can also refer to a P and P, discuss a little greater idea, whatever you'd like to do. Counselor Kirby, can we?
So, if something like this was passed for the Wilderness Lodge, that would also be okay for the trend and the other hotel in this?
Mr. Wall?
I'd have to take a look at the deal that we struck with the trend, because there's also a partnership between the district and the trend and its construction, so I'm not sure if there's, if there's a place to have what they would like to do. Right now, what we discovered when we went through this, and was actually surprised to us, is that we do not have regulations preventing long-term stay within any hotel. So, the Tumble Ridge is free to, in long-term usage in their units already. It's not something that's banned in any of the Tumble Ridge zoning laws or anything like that. So, they're free to do what they like. The trend would be free to do that as well, unless there was something in agreement to be signed with them when we entered that partnership. The Wilderness Lodge is not able to, because it was definitely laid out in the original agreement with this whole building, that they weren't able to, those sorts of things.
You have a question there?
Go ahead, Rob, Counselor Scott.
Okay, now, that, that has strat units in it also, that the, the Wilderness Lodge. I think there's four strat units in there? And, and, oh, could, could we put a?
Rob, Counselor Mackay?
Yeah.
Mr. Wall was just going to address your last point.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it's really good, that every unit in the Wilderness Lodge is a stratified unit. Every unit in there is stratified.
Did you hear that, Counselor Mackay?
Okay, and I'm wondering if that, does that make a difference where we could issue a, a variance with a, a time limit on it? Would that be possible?
Mr. Wall?
It's something we could take a look into doing.
Okay, we can check into that.
Okay, from what I understand, these are, and I might be wrong on this, but from what I understand, these individuals that approach council weren't looking to buy, they, they, they are the, the owners or part owners. Is that correct?
Mr. Wall?
If I understand the situation correctly, they are not the owners, they are the, they are the, they have invested money into it, and I do not know if they have a controlling share which moved them into ownership, but basically, they're facing a decision to either invest and pay off the taxes owed to the municipality and take ownership of the building, or not pay off the taxes and take ownership of the building. So, it is not theirs yet, is my understanding is. And it's, the condition for it becoming their property is not paying off the municipal taxes, it's simply that if they do not pay off the municipal taxes before the tax sale that comes in September, they will lose any claim ever, and district will.
Oh, I see, okay. Hey, thank you.
Counselor Dean, what's his suggestion? He said something, rather than trying to make any decision, that we put on a future P and P, talk about a little more depth of what that might be, also to bring out, you know, alternative levels of laws, but, but again, Mr. Wall, you were talking about a temporary variance?
That was Counselor Mackay, but yes.
Counselor Mackay? Which we can do, and perhaps discuss that in a little bit in detail. Let's put a motion forward that we improve this back to the next P and P, at which time we can discuss it with all of those round of cases that we mentioned.
I would, I would just ask that we move it to the P and P in July, so staff has time to go and do the research on the temporary variances, and how we can go about that.
So, what, what would you need from us tonight to ensure that it will go up on a future P and P?
We could look for a motion from council, but really, the practice that we've always had is that anytime anyone has something to add to the agenda, it's simply just been one person who asks, and we put it on the agenda. So, if, if you guys don't make a decision today, I'll simply add it on to the next P and P, or the P and P in July, sorry.
I did just have one question on the recommendation that, that you guys have put forth. To me, it's all four of those stipulations, is that correct? And the bottom one would be the only one that would change things, is just bringing the Wilderness Lodge to be the same as the trend and the TRM and stuff like that.
That's correct.
I myself didn't really have a problem with the recommendation, but if time isn't of the essence, I think further discussion would be okay with P and P.
I think my concern is when we look at that as a whole, for the whole other hotels in, in Tumble, is, we know what it was like when they were, we had camps in, or we had companies in, and we, all of a sudden, we didn't have a room to rent out to, to a tourist or anyone else, and, I mean, hockey teams couldn't come and book a room, because our hotels were full of, of workers, which. And, I mean, hockey teams couldn't come and book a room, because our hotels were full of, of workers, which at this time we don't have, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see that again. So whether it's a percentage allowed in a hotel that could be, you know, I don't know, I think we have, I'd like to look at it, at it as a whole. So, you know, we're not changing for one and another, just, you know, look at all those policies myself.
All right, Counselor, Counselor Scott, go ahead.
But this year would have just made it a fair playing field, it would have made consistency again with all of the, because right now, the Wilderness Lodge is at a disadvantage to the other ones. Is that?
Yeah, that certainly collected, Wilderness Lodge just had a disadvantage to the other ones, however, you can look at it on the other side, that they have a huge advantage on their startup, because of the discount they offer from the building, so there's depends which way you look at it, to be honest.
Counselor Mackay, any further comments, sir?
No, and that's, that's actually the reasoning why I, I, I thought about the, the temporary variance. And just, just by the fact that, who knows what's gonna happen in the future, this is likely to go through the hard times. And it should not apply to one without applying to the others, is my line of thinking, too.
So where do we stand there with regards to putting it on to the next, say, the P and P? Go ahead, Mr. Wall.
If council doesn't make a decision today, I will move it to the first P and P in July.
Counselor Mackay, you're okay with that?
Yeah, that sounds really good.
All right, then we will stick that as direction, it's fine. The next, I think the last item that we had. Counsel is the 9.1, which Counselor Kirby's requesting, Paulie Motion pertaining to rail tourism. Counsel adds, Counselor Kirby, let's keep that in, you can put that on before, just, your comments would be great.
Sure, this is more of a discussion item for council, I know in the past year, we've talked about the rail tourism that happened here once, once before. Right on our, on our line from Prince George to Tumler Ridge. At the NCLG, I had a chance to talk with Mayor Prince George, who would be willing to look into this as a partnership, to see what chances we are to have that, that, that car run again, because we're, we're not, we're not running any coal. I have no idea what that track is like or anything, so it would take a little bit of work to just to, to ask a few questions, make a few calls, and just to see if there was, if council was, liked the thought of looking into that. We know that it's not on, in the budget for this year, and I don't know what it would cost, I, I think you'd have to just, have to just look into it. I know Sue Kinney was very, she was behind, really back a few years ago. So it's just something to talk about, whether we really like to look into that, or are we just like, say, no, that's not bothering.
So in terms of adding to, uh, the Wilderness Strategy Plan, I think it's clear, I mean, I have a position, but we don't require a motion to do that, do we, Mr. Wall? Go ahead, Sue.
Yeah, we will need a motion to, to do that, and, and that's simply because when we add those things on, so it could be a couple of phone calls, and, and that's all it takes, it could be a phone call, and, and so, there we go. Council seeing the, you know, the level of work that senior staff is putting in, so anything we add will likely take away from other work, but if it's something that council wants to see done, we put it in there, we'll work on it, work back to you, so it's really up to council, whether they want us to use our resources.
Counselor Scott, win.
And to me, we have other priorities, like the paving of Highway 52, I'd like to see what we can do, so, like, if we could add this to the Economic Development Strategic Plan, it's more things to, to research. But I think we should stick to some of the priorities and get those finished before adding more.
I, I have no, I have no problem with that. Approach that, I was thinking about that, which I just assumed was, was to add it on to the list. And so that in terms of setting whatever priorities, if we have to, as you mentioned, as well, take some things off, fine, because that's kind of move up, because we think it's a higher priority, if not, we'll recite it, it will be on the list to get to, is that?
Yeah, and it was just some conversations that, you know, with different communities that get together and meet through these different conferences, saying, this would be a good idea, we've got the 2017 coming up, Canada's 150th, as a, you know, it would be a tourism pull for both communities, it, it's, it would be a unique run, for sure. You know, whether you could run it, maybe it's only two or three, if you're doing a bunch for a month, I don't know. It, it's, it's just one of those things, we haven't even, you know, we'd have to do some groundwork, and it's just throwing out, just throwing it out there when, when the rail isn't being used at this moment.
So, again, it's not clear as to exactly what we need, Mr. Wall?
Just a motion to add, add message not to use into the, not to economic development strategic plan.
So move by, Counselor Kirby. Discussion, who's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, counsel, we're now down to the council's business. Counselor Scott?
Well, we completed the NCLG. As applying the circle tour, and everything went off with huge success, with delegates visiting Tumler Ridge, some for the first time, with many mentioning of returning with families. We saw the Vic Center, there was a lineup for merchandise sales before the group gathered for a photo op in front of the newest building. Everybody was so impressed with the, the new Vic Center, the, the carving, and we used the partnership letting them know that the dino carving was from our neighboring Chatlin, who also hosted the, the circle tour with us. Then they toured the museum, and there was refreshments, lunches prepared by local businesses, and everyone was, like, there was just on how amazing the tour was. We continued on to Chatlin, then back to Dawson for the AGM. Tumler Ridge actually put two resolutions in, both were supported by the PRRD, and both were carried. One was the fossil protection legislation, what was, which was also endorsed by the NCLGA, and the municipal regulation of off-road vehicles. And that one, we had to give a little bit of an argument for, but it was also carried. And we kind of, our, our pitch was, it's to enable small communities a unique lifestyle to residents and promote tourism. And that's all the, the idea. It's a great opportunity for networking and workshops, to us align our ideas to benefit our community and achieve being accountable and transparent. One speaker did emphasize that we are a customer service organization and not a job creation. To check over spending, determine bare bones budget, and support and maintain a lasting infrastructure. Important to understand the operation scaled back, because in the busts, taxpayers can't sustain, and we're basically here to serve the people, and communication with backup is extremely important. Achieving here. Boom and bust isn't a good example, which many industry towns go through this, communities should never be complacent, and must continually look at diversification and encourage small business. Attended a budget meeting to meet the deadline of May 15th, and we're already discussing improvements for the procedure for next year. And some concerns that have come up from the community, one was a cap bylaw, which I think we addressed this evening, the golf course greens. Uninsured vehicles that have been moved from the Wolverine kilometer five to, they're being parked on our district land. And I think we've, with our new bylaw update, we'll, we'll reach those concerns as well, and the, um, too. Also, one complaint about the Monk and RV, regarding no attendant there, they were saying it's kind of looking unkept, so again, I think we'll be achieving that here in the near future. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Casey. Also attended the NCLG, and it was, it was nice to see both of our resolutions pass, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, when you get to present at these functions, it's a little nerve-wracking, but we're getting better, I think. Also, school District 59's board meeting was in Tumler Ridge, attended that. They, the topic came up of the soccer fields, our field situation, so it's, it's on their, it's on their radar, so that would be good to see them putting in some money towards, you know, our fields, we've got soccer tournaments and, you know, you kind of, you have kids, you don't like to see kids turning over on their ankles and stuff, but, I mean, I think this year is better after just a little bit of tender loving care from, from public works, seating, you know, ground repairs, it's really all we can do with the weather we have here. Our, our SEVEX students presented to the board, they did a fantastic job, I was so proud of them. The SEVEX kids just left today at four o'clock, we had a great, the community opened their arms up, it was, it was great, they, they were just, they loved what they did, they either highlights were river voting, they spent a night at Willam Lake, and tubing at Willam yesterday. They're all left with a little bit rosy red, birds tired. Farewell, au revoir, no, we, we can all rest, too. Also, some issues on the busing, again, come up, and, and just different courses, now we're, there's talk of, you know, some provincial exams not being done anymore, so there's a lot going on in the school district. We finished our branding, we had, the TAC had their last branding meeting, and we had unanimous decision on the brand that will be coming forward to council fairly soon. I've had one question inquiry about, the question is, the boat launch, who would be, where does the, who, who would put up a sign for parking down there? Would it be the district's responsibility, would it be?
Mr. Wall?
That would be the province, if we started, we're taking them alive, it would be something that happens there, so I would suggest we just get in touch with the province if there's an issue down there.
So, I mean, just to kind of, just a suggested parking diagram would be a good idea for this team?
If we put anything down there regulating or telling people what they should do, we would immediately assume liability for what happens down there. I would say we could get in touch with Tim, not Tim anymore, Tim's replacement.
Yes.
The new Tim.
You know, just to comment on it, then, a lot of the subjects that have discussed by Helen and by Joanne, we've been talking about the big launch, the launch, I mean, it just it just absolutely go nowhere, I mean, that, not just, I mean, to expand the parking and make it an absolute first-class facility, I just don't understand why we can't proceed basically back solid. There's room there to be able to do it, and we just don't seem to have a, you know, a plan as yet to.
Yeah, if, so we put the sign down there, we take, we take ownership of it, basically, but we can get in touch with the province and look at getting a there for recreation, you can get those for 99 years, we can take it over, do whatever we want down there, expand the parking lot and yada, yada. The next council meeting, next week on Monday, we have a report regarding the committees, and campgrounds, and waterfronts, property authority committees, that is going to be formed. I think that would be an excellent topic for that committee to take up, if that committee comes back with a recommendation to council, that, that boat launch is something we want to go to the council and take over and review these matters. They can bring that recommendation to council, council can pass it, and we can look at, get the work done.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kirby, just a few notes as well, I had to attend the Peace River Regional District Meeting. Subject of Northern Health came up, growing up healthy in Northern D.C. was the topic item, exploring the factors that contribute to the health of children and youth as they grow up in that Northern D.C. Consultation will take place throughout the Northern Region in May, June of this year, and the consultation will provide participants with information about Northern Health, the Northern Health Strategic Plan, chief medical health officers, health status report on child health and health status and services for each location. There's 12 locations that we're interested in terms of being selected, three of which are in the Peace, Peace River area, but Tumler Ridge was not one that was mentioned to, to participate in that. See eight, also the fact that we had another topic with Northern Health, had a discussion and meeting and so forth, it's still part of the growing up healthy Northern D.C. And basically was to identify emerging priorities that can contribute to Northern Health's strategic direction to travel from 3.0 to 8.17, and help Northern Health to better understand legitimate and relevant concerns for Northern D.C. citizens and the partnerships needed to address these concerns, and they talked about being able to get together to try to come up with more specifics. Talked about also the Meekle Wind Energy Limited Partnership and so forth, which they are, talked about the construction activities that are scheduled for this year, which include the tower, tower electric, the, the sound and leak installation, substation completion, as well as connector lines, and it went on and on with regards to that. And the projects are expected to be operational in 2016, was another, another area that, that they talked about. As has been mentioned here, attended the NCLG, a number of areas were discussed, the Northern Medical Program Cross Session, which offers a pathway to train physicians currently, two students per year, focused on rural and family practice. Geoscience and mineral exploration development Northern D.C. was another project that they had in, in session. Quote, there was good science gets it right, mapping out groundwater in Peace, in the Peace River area, and the more than 100 exploration projects they talked about in D.C. were under active participation. As Counselor Kirby has mentioned, also attended the school district meeting at Northern Lights College. Mentioned, again, the four students traveling to Quebec, very, very well done, it was a first-class show, as you have pointed out, Counselor Kirby, and kids did their shtick and, and really did well. It was really a first-class show, that's for sure. Also, they talked about 30 kids being enrolled in Kennedy Garden for next year. Partnership between Northern Lights College and School District 59, as I answered as Marvin, we talked about $90,000 a year in busing, which is four to six people between Chatlin and Dawson, suspended the service, which is not a particularly popular area. And as has been mentioned also by Counselor Kirby, the plant fields and so forth. And I, I honestly thought that we have discussed that subject around the council chambers previously on I know that there's progress investment involved, but it doesn't seem to be getting admitted, and I can't remember how much further along that we took that, but as I understand, there was a real appetite for council to fix the fields and eliminate to the best that we could any of the liabilities that there might be with regards to the poor conditions and so forth.
We brought back councilness on what we thought it was going to be to completely redo those fields, and it was quite expensive. Council decided at the time not to, and to spend a couple of years just with, as Counselor Kirby put it, to see it, with seeing what we got out of just the upkeep maintenance, so that's where we are right now, I think we're in the first full year of that upkeep, that increased maintenance program. So I would, we can move forward on increased levels of, 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 but the direction to us is to continue this upkeep, increased upkeep, and then see what.
Okay, Brenna? Also, the mineral production of NCL, H and A, of NCLG, they also talked about how it, how it has been relative to the shutdowns and so forth. And a lot of particular good news in terms of the long-term prognosis there as well. NEIT had a session of, 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 call the effectiveness of working together, having a long-term vision of all those kinds of wonderful things. And again, it's already been mentioned by both Counselor Scott and Counselor Kirby, the two TR resolutions, and I congratulate them both for the initiative that went away, they both made presentations to the open forum as well, followed one very, very well. I also attended a panel session on boom and bust, which was presented to all of the representatives that were there. And the one disappointed, that disappointment that I had, is that they were talking about boom and bust, and the people that were up on the stage did a good job relating that, but there was not a Tumler Ridge representative. And in this area, North and South Peace, Tumler Ridge is truly going through that, having gone through that. I thought it would have been the most appropriate, a member of our council was also up on giving was also up on giving their views relative to just how difficult that situation is. It was well done and so forth, but I just fell from a Tumble Ridge perspective that we had a legitimate license for being there and we need to talk in terms of what we are all going through. That was a bit of a disappointment. The last thing I wanted to mention, Dr. Helm, made a presentation of GeoPark and all of the highlights that we all were up here in Tumble Ridge. I thought it was absolutely first-class. I mean, he was cooking. There wasn't any, any doubt about that. It was a September period of time. He had a great slide presentation. You could tell by the people that were there listening to it, which again was the open reception area where all the business of the day is conducted. And they were really, really into it. Really, and again, at the end of it, was the fact that anybody who is interested in coming up to Tumble Ridge in all seriousness, to see what he pointed out and discussed in his slide presentation, just are missed out. I mean, it was just that good. So I wanted to pass on that. That was an excellent overview of what people can see coming into Tumble Ridge. And that's very important for tonight. So leave it open for? Oh, Rob!
Yes.
Are you still there, sir?
I'm still here and I'm still awake.
You don't have much time, because we, I took it all up.
Okay, well, I've got a massive report here. But what I'll do is I'll wait. And, but I do have a couple of things I didn't want to talk about.
You missed, you missed.
With the community for us, we had the opportunity to meet with Minister Thompson. And it was again regarding our uplift, as well as the expansion. And he really, he was really, seemed to be trying to help us out in that regard. And I know there were some other things been happening since he got back. But while we were there, we had the opportunity to make a pitch for the, to host next year's convention. And we were looking at about 200 delegates. And we brought the trilogy that was put out by the museum, showing the fossils, the history and the scenery. And we just kind of used them as a little bit of an example. This is, just so you can look at Tumble Ridge, just to show what it has to offer for putting something like this on. We're pretty confident we can do it. We have space, we'll have, looks like we'll have hotel space. So it's quite the event. And we were informed that towards the end that we actually want, we will be putting that on next year. So that's going to be great for Tumble Ridge. There was all kinds of other stuff that we, a sawmill, for example. One, it was a sawmill that employed five individuals for two shifts. And each shift ran off of two truckloads of logs. And now it's different type of wood, granted, but it just goes to show you that it's something within our boundaries and within our force. A little bit of an expansion and we definitely could be putting people to work on that. At the FCM, just briefly, because I really don't have much notes made on this, but big thing was the infrastructure grants are coming up. And there's no doubt about it. It's going to be, it's going to be something that we have to be all over. There was some, a little bit of concern over the, the applications and how smaller communities are going to have trouble with them. And I guess we'll see that when they come out. Also, a pretty good discussion with the Public Works Manager, Flint Lawn. And it just goes to show that some of the things that we have been proactive about, things like our sustainability plan or asset management plans, which we're looking at right now, those things are, they're a definite plus. Just an example Flint Lawn gave is they've done things the exact same as we did. The town went in all at the same time. The infrastructure was all the same age. When things started going wrong in Flint Lawn, they could not put a budget in place that they could keep. Their budget was, it just kept on exploding on them. They had no way of keeping control of it. So by doing the proactive things that we're doing, it shows that we're going down the right path. And definitely it'll mitigate some of the problems that they had. Okay, there's, I think I'll leave the rest to our next meeting if that's okay, because my notes are all.
No problem.
Thank you, Mayor Casey. You just, we missed a schedule of meetings, 8.12. I would just like to ask council, you're aware of a decision that is ready to be made? We want to talk about what that decision is because it's a decision proposed, but we are able to make that on the 8th or the 9th, if that's something, if it's an important issue for council to take up quickly or if not, we can wait and make it on the free team. So I would just be looking for council to give us direction on whether or not we should take it up this week or wait till next.
And, so just going on, I don't know what to talk about. So in terms of length of meeting, short and straight, as it were, kind of thing?
Depending on the discussion around the council table, yes.
So the dates again, or the 8th?
Or the 9th.
9th? I'm going, and at what time we're looking, 5 o'clock, is that?
5 o'clock. And again, this is only if this is an issue council wants to deal with quickly. If not, waiting until the PPC on the 13th is certainly an option as well.
We have a special council meeting on the 8th as well. Already scheduled for 5 o'clock, as I understand.
There's no meeting scheduled. That was a placeholder.
For Mr. Bannam?
Mr. Bannam. But that's something we're here to discuss. If council wants to meet during this week, take care of that as well. We can move to next PPC. It's really what you guys have an appetite for.
So the 8th or the 9th, the two choices?
Or the 13th, yeah.
Or the 13th.
Which is the regular meeting.
I'm available the 8th at 5 p.m.
I'm also available on the 8th at 5. I don't think Thursday would work though. So it'll be Wednesday or the 13th.
So then again, the meeting that was scheduled with Mr. Bannam, 5 p.m. On the 8th, that's been canceled?
It's never been confirmed. We're, Mr. Bannam said that he might be able to make that depending on when he got the forms from council. He didn't get those until this afternoon. So whether or not he's going to be ready for that meeting, I'm not sure. So I would say let's proceed without consideration of Mr. Bannam.
Counselor Kirby, the 8th is going to be for yourself and Counselor Scott? It's okay with me as well at 5 o'clock, the same time. Counselor Mackay, you're still with us?
Yeah, yeah. And the 8th is, I will not be back by the 8th. Anytime, anytime after that.
Okay. Well, then let's, let's go for the 8th and contact the other councils, make sure that we have a forum and so forth. And council, with your permission, will schedule it for 5 o'clock on the 8th? I believe we're down to.
Okay, I have one. We talked a long time ago about the suspension bridge. And that kind of fell by the wayside. We talked about land development and that fell by the wayside. I'm just wondering if council has any thoughts about if the Stonehenge, that was something that was brought up, you know, with Counselor or Dr. Helm. I'm just wondering if there's been any thoughts about some initiatives about building something new? Like I know that there's a lot to attract, is it just a Tumble Ridge? I think we still need a new walk factor. And the bridge is what I was excited about. And if that didn't happen, it's going to swing or something like that. I just wondered if there was anything like that in that.
I, I know that there hasn't been anything officially. Do you mind if you, if council and Ms. Wong can cover? Nothing has been officially taken off the list. We talked about the suspension bridge and we talked about the zip line and activities. And in terms of what we're developing has been or how it's moved up the priority ladder. Quite honestly, I'm not clear with any of the other stuff going on. Any comments, Counselor Kirby or Counselor Scott as well?
I think it's tough for myself and even you, Roxanne, when you work, when your portfolio is all around tourism and you're working with people and, you know, outside of Tumbler and here that, you know, they heard sparks going, yeah, it's hard to put those kind of projects back. So as far as anything fun goes, asset management is fun. It's good. You know, I'm glad, you know, there's some pluses. But yeah, we're kind of, it seems like we're just a little bit missing the boat on some of those attractions. And I don't think they're ever off, you know, I mean, I know we're putting in for the mountain bike. I mean, we saw some development there. I think even our, the JCP that went through, they're seeing some trail maintenance. And the ATV club is moving ahead with some stuff. But as far as the big wealth factor things, I mean, Stone, the Henge that Dr. Helm has talked about, that would be a plus for tourism wherever that would be put. Even the walking paths, that's our walking, downtown walking tour has been kind of put back. And we started really strong and then we hit those signage issues. And the branding, once the branding takes place, once we start getting things off the ground, hopefully those projects will come back. I would, I know that I'll be bringing them up again. And well, that's not a dead horse yet with me.
And they're still on the list. Counselor Scott?
I was going to say, the land development, I think, is a priority too. So that's going to be moving ahead. We've got a lot of things that we're going to try planning and then implementing that. But again, it's prioritizing, then making sure the infrastructure is number one. Because if everything starts falling apart, then we have nothing. Also, there was talk of like municipal park, like developing the pond back behind the Big Center, which would possibly could tie into Stonehenge. So everybody is discussing and throwing around ideas. It's just bringing it all together.
I just wanted to say yay on the boat launch too. I'm glad you brought that up because we were, it was very hot this weekend and it was again very, very busy. And it only takes a couple of guys to park a little bit of signage and then just drive a mess down there. And it makes it so instead of having 12 people parking, we've got two people take down 12, 12 people. So, yeah, I'd love to see some of that stuff.
Any other questions from?
Yeah, just a, a discussion on the ATV is the four-way stop, which one is 7.
Original circle.
Okay. Anything's rooted. And we don't, we've had any cameras or a call from? Counselor Scott, so much enthusiasm. Anybody object, Mike? Follow your paper. Thank you, council meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, guys, for today.
Counselor Kirby and Counselor Scott were very popular tonight.
It's Kirby, Scott, Scott Kirby.
We got tissue and a vacuum cleaner.